Good morning, the time is now 9:46 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of May 14th, 2024 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Dr. Pritchett?
I would like to add a resolution in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second by Ms. Snyder? Very good, we've got all sorts of fingers pointing. Dr. Pritchett, back to you to describe the resolution.
Each May has been designated as Asian Pacific Heritage, American Heritage Month. And I felt it would be appropriate if the board acknowledged that and supported those schools and our students in our schools who are celebrating that. I've noticed as I've been reading articles and seeing some coverage with the media that some schools are in particular putting on special presentations. So it is with that that I thought it was appropriate that the board should recognize that and pass a resolution.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had a description of the resolution. No feeling that it is necessary to read it into the agenda at this point. We could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly, absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other motions to add to the agenda, Ms. Lipton?
Yes, Dr. Rice, I would like to add to the agenda a resolution in honor of Jewish American Heritage Month.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Lipton. Is there any second? Second by Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton, back to you to describe the resolution.
Yes, it is since 2006, May has been designated as Jewish American Heritage Month. And as a Jewish American and also a member of this board, I thought it would be nice to offer this resolution to celebrate the month of May for Jewish American Heritage Month.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any more discussion associated therewith? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and if I could have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended. Okay, moved by Dr. Pugh, seconded by Ms. Lipton. Any discussion associated therewith? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on the agenda as amended.
Bullock? Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning, you have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the State Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table is Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB Delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, and Ms. Candace Jackson, the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Back to the table to my right are Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us today Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor Ex officio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Those interested in participating in public comment may do so at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to provide public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage. The first item on today's agenda for the committee of the whole meeting is the presentation on Exploring Robotics, A Student-Led Journey With The Use Of Section 99H Funds. This presentation will share information about the impact that the state-funded Section 99H robotics grant has had on improving mathematics, science, and technology skills in Michigan school districts. It will focus on the growth of robotics over the last 11 years and will provide a student-led overview of how the robotics program at Waverly Community Schools is being used to support STEM education in the district. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Assessment, School Improvement, and Systems Support; Mr. Drew Finkbinder, the Assistant Director of the Office of Systems Evaluation and Technology; Ms. Kelly Blake, the Superintendent of Waverly Community Schools; and Ms. Catherine Kelly Hart, a teacher in Waverly Community Schools. And joining us today are students Addison, Callan, Ian, Austin, Isaac, and Harper. And they are just as bright-eyed and bushy-tailed as you get for young people. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board. We are excited to have Waverly Community Schools with us today, including Superintendent Blake and a cadre of students along with staff who work very closely and represent their robotics efforts in their district. This is a definite STEM and 3P or PLAY project, and yes, PLAY-based learning experience for students at all grade levels in Waverly Community Schools. Mr. Finkbinder of the Office of Systems Evaluation and Technology will provide an overview of our time together this morning. And we will ask any additional members that will be presenting to join us at this time.
We'll have the students come up after we conclude ours portion, but have Kelly in... Thank you. So I will provide a brief overview and history of the 99H robotics grant. The grant was initially funded under former Governor Snyder as a way to improve STEM learning here in the state. Initially, it was a $3 million grant only going to the FIRST Robotics Program to provide, quote, "pupils in grades 7 to 12 with expanded opportunities to improve mathematics, science, and technology skills by participating in events hosted by a science and technology development program known as FIRST." Initially, this funding was only given to public schools here in the state. Over time, we have been able to expand that program where you now see that the grant this year was funded at a little over $6.5 million, $5.9 million of that going to public schools and $600,000 of that going to non-public schools. And also, two years ago, the legislation was changed to allow for additional providers here in the state to also be eligible for grant funding under this program. So now we have six participating programs, including FIRST, Lawrence Technology University Robofast, MATE, QuirkMine, Robotics Education and Competition, or REX, and Square One. And we are very proud of the expansion that we've been able to do here under this grant. The grant itself has been so popular and the robotics programs at districts have been so popular that over the last three years, we have been unable to fund each team that requests funding at their full requested amount. And so we've had to prorate those awards due to the popularity and participation that we have at all levels in the school districts and at all grade levels with this grant program. Some things that I really want to highlight are, this year at the FIRST Robotics World Championships, Michigan teams accounted for 92 of the 1,015 participating teams at that, which is a huge percentage. And also the fact that for the FIRST Robotics Competition, or FRC, which is the high school-level competition for FIRST, Michigan has the most teams of any other state, at 515, that participated this year. The next highest state was California. So if you think about the difference between the size of population of California and Michigan, they had 283 teams, so we had almost twice as many high school participation teams than the next highest state here in the country. And that's something that we are incredibly proud of here at the department and that we are able to play a very small role in providing some grant funding for those programs so that kids have the extended opportunity to learn through STEM, through robotics. And now I have also other programs around robotics, including drones and watercraft as well. So it's been a very exciting time to be part of this program. But as much as I'm sure we're all excited about the growth of this program here at the state, what we're really here to do today is highlight one of our local districts in Waverly Community Schools, who has started their robotics program in 2017 with a single team. They have since grown to 25 teams. And they, of the 92 teams that I mentioned in the earlier slide of going to FIRST World Championship, they were one of the Michigan districts represented in that program. So at this time, I am going to exit stage back and allow our wonderful students here from Waverly Community Schools to come up and continue this presentation and provide a demonstration of all of the things that they have learned through the robotics program. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Callan Maxwell. I'm a 10th grader at Waverly High School, and I'm joined with Addison.
I am a 12th grader at Waverly High School.
I am Ian. I am a 6th grader at Waverly East.
I am Austin. I'm a 5th grader at Waverly East Intermediate School.
I'm Harper. I'm a 4th grader of Elmwood Elementary.
I'm Isaac, 4th grader of Elmwood Elementary.
So this is just proof that how we have, as the slide says, we have robotics teams all the way from 3rd grade all the way through 12th grade. We have over 280 students involved in every single level. And now these students are actually going to get to show you a demo of their amazing robot.
So how robotics works at the 4th and 5th and 6th grade levels is we compete on a game board and we build our robot using Lego pieces and code it to complete tasks on the board. So the students today have a task in which they need to push the orange piece of the model and turn the rock star around so that the audience can see the rock star perform. So...
Coding was fun because... The Innovation Project is about solving a problem. You cannot solve the problem if you don't have a big imagination and if you don't work with your team. Coding was fun because it was with the whole team. And building was fun basically for the same reason, about building with Legos.
We use the Spike app to code a robot. When you decide on how you want the robot to move, wait, how you want the robot to move or you want it to do, you have to go to that section and then make sure to drag and drop all the information needed. When you want it to move, you have to include the direction and speed, not just moving the robot.
In order to complete tasks on the board and program the robot, we measured inches for movement and degrees for turning and lifting. When you want it to move, you have to... When you're measuring degrees, you have to try and then go back to fix it several times and make sure the robot is right where it needs to be.
So for the past three consecutive years, Waverly has been able to host the elementary robotics competition. So this allows around 56 teams each year from all over the state to demonstrate their robots, such as these guys, and from other schools as well. And at the older level, we like to make sure that all of our students have an opportunity in their future. So with college scholarships, schools like Kettering University offer direct scholarships for students who are a part of FIRST. And we like to push our students to make sure not only they have the requirements for that, but that they have the drive and they want to do that. We also support them by allowing job shadows with various of our community partners and also helping them attain jobs. We currently have a mentor of ours who was able to get a job with all to himself, the new General Motors plant. She was able to get a job there. And we also have a current student that is working with State Representative Angela Whitwer due to our connection with her. And that also leads us into meeting with Gretchen Whitmer and Angela Whitwer to, again, advocate for state funding towards robotics and other STEAM activities. And then we also like to make sure that we're reinforcing the students that are in our program. So if students are interested in welding, we like to make sure that we're there to support that and support that need and have the mentors and the skills that we're able to provide to those students. And then, so over the past seven years, we have been able to obtain over 200 committed business partners, which we like to call community partners. And throughout the past seven years as well, we've had 15 current coaches come back as alumni or who were alumni come back to serve our program. And Waverly High School serves as a prime school for the Society of Manufacturing Engineers, also known as SME, which will help get our school more funding for STEAM opportunities and get new supplies for that as well. We have also introduced an Intro to Robotics class and Intro to Engineering, which has served as part of the curriculum for the past five years. Any questions?
Before we entertain questions, we do have... See if I can do this correctly.
The U.S. Army finally solved the mosquito problem. It's a...
Oops.
It's just...
My apologies again.
I think it's the opportunities. Before this, I've never used the hand tool in my life. I realize through learning all these new tools and like these new skills that I...
Does it show that it's a video?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, hold on. It's displayed through teams.
Like, it's not sharing through teams. Our apologies.
Can you minimize the PowerPoint? Click through the end of the question. Okay.
There we go.
I wanted to be an engineer and I wanted to fabricate and create solutions.
Waverly Robotics is a place where people can come and feel accepted and also learn some new skills and trades.
My name is Jeff.
My name is Chad. And we are the coaches of Waverly Robotics.
Next thing, we are in the crunch. In two and a half weeks, we show up to competition. Do you want to show up with what we have now? When you're here, what should you be? Make yourself valuable, right? So make sure that you are finding your mentor, Mrs. Parks, Mr. Stauffer, right? Make sure you're finding those people, asking for jobs, getting the jobs, all of that. Who's cheering us out tonight?
26!
26!
26!
Again, I have two guys coming here. Congratulations on being here. Good luck. And yeah, we're back over.
All right, I joined the club at Michigan State for FIRST Alumni. I got an email asking if I could start a team. And I told my guy I could help, but I can't do the school, the logistics side. I would need some help with that. So someone from FIRST Michigan partnered me up with Jeff Parks, and the rest is history.
Robotics is so important right now because I think on a national level, our school system is not getting kids ready for the workforce and for the problems that they're going to experience in the workforce. Robotics does that because we're giving them real problems to solve with real things, and they have to have a product at the end. So obviously, there's four-year traditional college, but people don't always think about what kind of engineer they want to be or they don't think about how to go straight into skilled trades or do an apprenticeship. When we started doing this team, that changed a lot. And that started to change a lot of my goals. How do we get these students more opportunities? Especially when there's students that don't know opportunities or haven't seen opportunities inside maybe their family unit or those sorts of things. So they really learn how to use their hands, how to think, learn real work skills. They come a long way from like the beginning of the season to the end of the season. It's really fun to watch. It was one of my favorite moments. We had to make some major modifications. The students are like, "We'll do it." And I'm like, "Okay." I get there and the whole thing is just torn apart, done, everyone's working. I went to go help and Jeff pulls him back and he goes like, "See, they got pretty much everything done already without you here." And I stepped back and I looked, and I was amazed with how far they'd come. I mean, there's people that didn't even know how to use a drill. And now they're making full robot disassembly and reassembly without me. And it's my favorite thing to see.
When you can go to an employer and say, "Hey, if you have a problem, I know how to fix it." Or "I know how to learn how to fix it," again, somebody who has no experience and just don't know how to fix a problem.
Everyone in robotics collaborates. It's not just like it's every team for themselves. Everybody works together.
I did a little programming when I first started and I joined through the build side. I'm now on the CAD side of the program. But I guess try everything out and just see what fits.
My dreams and goals for students is through this program, they can change their life through their own actions and the steps that they take.
Thinking of start cutting carbs, I need to drop my belt.
So our students... I'm sorry, before I do that, we also failed to introduce Mr. Jeff Parks. You may have noticed in the video, he is the robotics coach and grant coordinator at Waverly Community Schools. So with that, we are opening the floor to any questions that the board members may have.
That's terrific. And Coach, would you care to say a few words about the development of the program?
I think that these guys did a really good job of kind of speaking out right, as the slideshow did, and so did the video, just how much, you know, when we... The development of the program over seven years has happened quite a bit because of the student interest, the community interest, and people seeing the opportunity to have these students learn real-world application, real-world skills, immediately employable skills. And the students in any FIRST program, or really any robotics program, are sought after by employers, colleges, and it offered our students especially a great opportunity.
That's terrific, thank you. And Superintendent, elementary, middle, and high school kids in robotics, how cool is that? Fully built out?
It's wonderful, and it all started in 2017. I was telling Delsa, I got a phone call from, I believe, Gail saying, "Hey, have you heard about FIRST Robotics?" And like, "That sounds really awesome." Let me hear my principals put out, you know, an email. And one teacher at the time answered the call and said, "I'd love to do robotics teams." So Jeff started with one team, and due to his efforts, it has just grown exponentially. So it's really a point of pride for the district. The kids love it, and we have great coaches like Kat. So we're very happy with the trajectory of robotics. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you very much. Board members, questions or comments?
Just say, "Great job." I wanted to know which one of you, any of you, is this your, like, your first time in the robotics program? Or is some of you starting like FIRST in Michigan Robotics and work your way up? Like, my son started doing a little Lego robotics in his school. And now he's a computer science engineer at Grand Canyon University. So, but he helped with a lot of stuff at the house, so, you know.
I was actually on one of these younger teams when I was literature. And I've stayed with robotics throughout my entire time through school, and I'm on the high school team.
So how many years in total?
I started in 5th grade, and I'm in 10th grade now, so about four, five years.
Okay.
Who's the first timers?
Everyone here has participated at least since 3rd grade. So anywhere from two to three years on the younger side.
Yeah, I love the youngest students saying, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we got this." "Yeah, yeah, we're veterans." Thank you, other... Thank you very much, Senator. Other questions? Please, Ms. Lipton.
So just a question for the students. Do you have an opportunity to work with different grade spans on the team? In other words, do you have just like 3rd graders working with 3rd graders, 10th graders working with 10th graders? Do you have the opportunity to work across grade spans?
Yeah, so the high school team actually helps mentor some of the younger students. So like last season, we went and helped with the elementary to kind of get them ready for their competition, help them with any coding problems they had. And we do like also help our middle school team. We like allow them to use our shop and stuff. And we also like to help them solve any issues that they have.
And just, if there was a school that didn't have robotics, what would be your message to that school that wanted to have robotics?
I would say that specifically in this region, there are not too many robotics teams in the capital area region. So reaching out to those few teams that are there and making connections and asking questions, asking for help, seeing what their strategy is, and really making those deep relationships because that definitely comes out. Like, when we were in Houston, whenever we saw another team from Michigan, it was like, "Oh, my gosh, I know you and, you know, I know where you're from and I kind of, I know a little better about you." And there's like some of that just already created relationship just because you are from Michigan, you're a Michigan team.
Thank you.
There, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
I am just so impressed. I'm just feeling inadequate sitting in this role. I... You... The FIRST Robotics was in Saginaw, and I missed it. So if, or the high school FIRST Robotics competition. So just keeping us posted on where you all are and where we can find you and would love to see this in action. We promise not to get in your way, but it'll be tempting. But just thank you all for coming, and this is amazing, it's great.
This is an initiative that's been many years in the growing, more than a...
This is an initiative that's been many years in the growing, more than a decade. This was a signature initiative of the former governor, Governor Snyder, and it's continued to grow after his governorship. Proof that, you know, it's not a function of partisanship. It's a function of serving children. And these are skills that young people take. You know, Senator Bullock talks about how his son was involved in robotics and now his son is a computer engineer. So there are tremendous job opportunities in this area and, or in these areas. And you're learning to serve problems. I love the quote on the screen about it's not necessarily the skills you bring, knowing how to do, but how to reflect upon how to problem solve. And I think that that's really enormous. And Coach and Superintendent, you're well aware that some of it is the hard skills and some of it is what we call the softer skills. It's the working together. It's the collaboration. It's the teamwork. And that helps enormously as well. You can have brilliant people. They can't necessarily work in space with one another. And Coach, it doesn't get done without coaches. You know that, don't you? You know, the kids are fabulous, but they have to have, they have to have people, you know, driving them and helping them become what they're capable of becoming.
And I will say too, on a microcosm, we only be able to bring six students out of our 280. We were only able to bring two coaches out of our amazing coaching staff. So we have quite a few volunteers at the high school level. And then we have a lot of amazing committed teachers that coach at the middle school and all the elementary school levels.
Well, we appreciate that you didn't bring 280 kids with you, Coach, because there is the fire marshal and all of that. But we may come to you to see the two, to see the 280 because you're around the corner. And I think that that would create a different impression for, for staff and board members. Any other questions or comments from board members? Please, yeah.
Just one more question. Thank you. In your, in your district, is the, is the ability to participate in robotics, is it integrated? I know you mentioned the classes that you can take, but is it a, done as sort of like a club? Sort of after-school, extracurricular? Or is it something that, that students can sort of do part of the school day?
I would say at this point right now, it is all after school, other than those classes that we have started to layer in. The classes and the teams are separate and that really allows us to have an extracurricular similar to sports or other things like that the students can participate in and really get a chance to maybe make connections outside of their classroom and, you know, build something for that extracurricular piece.
Are there ever, are there any challenges in terms of, I don't want to say competing, but in other words, you know, limited time in a, in a, in a student's schedule to, you know, to do robotics and a sport, let's say soccer or something like that? Or is it, like in other words, is it an either or or there are students that can sort of pick and choose from?
I think there's always going to be, you know, a little bit of, as we see busier and busier people with that. I would say that we've taken a lot of things to mitigate that across the board in our district. So they meet right after school. They meet certain days all the way up until they get to high. At the high school level, they meet at night. So they actually meet from six to eight at night. That allows students to be able to participate in other extracurriculars. It also allows us to have community volunteers that come in that have a traditional nine-to-five job.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Senator.
Since you guys are Team Michigan, which color do you go with? Do you go blue when you see you get?
There's always, there's always somebody who's going to start something. Students, staff members, Superintendent, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. Federal COVID funding is ending September 30th, 2024. MDE staff have been working hard to assist in properly obligating these funds. This presentation will cover efforts and what districts can expect with the conclusion of these funds. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Business, Health and Library Services, Mr. Spencer Simmons, Director of the Office of Financial Management, Mr. Kevin Walters, Supervisor in the Office of Financial Management Grants, Contracts and School Support, and Ms. Stephanie Long, Superintendent of the Leland Public Schools. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. You may however, board members, be subjected to a quick pop quiz. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone. It is great to be with you this morning talking about the ESER pandemic relief funding. We're going to start out with just a review of what the allowable uses are. So ESER came about as a result of the pandemic. You will remember that. The allowable uses included supplies to sanitize and clean the facilities where students were, the activities to address unique needs of students in identified demographic categories, preparedness and response efforts, including those public health protocols, providing principals and school leaders like Superintendent Long here with resources needed to be able to assist their students, educational technology, including hardware and software, and planning and improving activities for long-term closures. In addition, the funds could be used for mental health services and supports, facility projects to improve air quality, think HVAC, things like that, facility repairs to mitigate against the spread of the virus, addressing learning loss among students or actually the, the, the learning gap that was experienced as a result of school being closed or students being remote, summer and after-school programming and other activities to maintain continuity of services for the district. And then we also just wanted to remember, remind everyone of the timelines of these specific grant pieces. So CARES was ESER I. That was the first round of funding. CRESSA, as we call it, was ESER II, and then ARP is ESER III. Those all essentially started at the beginning of the pandemic, although the funding for II and III came later, but were retroactive to that date. The extended expenditure periods though, and the liquidation periods are what's different. So September 30th of '22 for ESER I, '23 for ESER II, and this coming September, September 30th, 2024 for ESER III. That liquidation period, that time at which there is no opportunity to spend a penny after that, was December 30th, '22, '23, and then coming up for '24.
This slide is going to outline stages of the pandemic. And the release of funds between CARES Act, the CRESSA and American Rescue Plan flowed out. Onset to mid-pandemic was the first iteration of funding. And what we're showing here is the focus of the expenditures in that first step out of the funding gate was for PPE, health and safety, technology, infrastructure, maintaining staff. And what we want to note here is that the districts in Michigan, even though it was not a set aside requirement in CARES Act, committed nearly 25% or one quarter of their funds toward addressing learning loss at the onset to mid-pandemic range. You'll notice mid-pandemic, ESER II or the CRESSA funds came about, instructional support and technology, staffing, learning loss and mental health. And we started to see some shifting to HVAC and projects to mitigate infrastructure and structural needs as well. You'll see the addressing learning loss, even though there was no set aside required in the federal statute to set aside funds to address learning loss was, was nearly 28% for Michigan districts even mid-pandemic as students, as we know, were starting to come back to either full-time brick and mortar or hybrid learning situations. Mid to post-pandemic, the third stage, the associated grant was the American Rescue Plan, by far the largest of the three from a funding standpoint. For Michigan districts, the focus was clearly to address learning loss, improving curricular and instructional support, and then a percentage that was spent on HVAC and other building projects. Important to note that the addressing learning loss percentage, there was a 20% requirement in the federal statute to spend these funds. Local districts had to spend at least 20% of these funds to address learning loss. And Michigan districts spent in excess of 59% in addressing learning loss from the ARP. Again, it's important to note that as Diane said, the AR, the American Rescue Plan funding is active and they can continue to obligate funds against that through September 30th of '24. The Michigan Department of Education developed with our partners at DTMB an MDE COVID dashboard. The link is provided here. And this covers the bulk of our ESER funds. And we want to note that we were able to break this down to total budgeted by category. So on the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see how the budgeted funds for all of the ESER funds. These would be all three iterations combined were budgeted. For the most part, you'll see salaries and benefits, purchased services, supplies and materials, and some capital outlay just shy of 7% in that category. Then on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see how they use the funds. And the use of funds you'll see for instructional purposes and learning loss was significantly higher. That was about nearly 49%. Then you'll also see continuity of services for districts to continue to operate as a district by far the, the next largest piece of that pie. But this dashboard is available. It's a public link that individuals can go to at any time to see how your local district or collective districts statewide are performing and how they're budgeting and using the funds that were allocated to them. There's some definitions that we're going to start to use in these subsequent slides that we would like to cover. First is allocated. Alan, when you see the word allocated, that's the total amount that it was awarded to an individual district or the combined districts overall. So an allocated amount is the total award amount. Budgeted is at the hands of the LEA. So the LEA, the Local Education Agency, has to budget within a application process. And they are, the amount that is budgeted in their application is what's going to be reflected as budgeted. Then the approved amount, once they submit a budget, once they submit an application, if there are allowable items, then they become approved. That means that Michigan Department of Education has reviewed the application. We have deemed the expenditures to be approvable, allowable, in accordance with the federal guidance. And then they get an approved amount. Once that approved amount is identified, then the local district can then start to draw funds based on reimbursement. These are federal funds, so they are reimbursable in nature. So then you'll see reimbursed and that's the amount the LEA has drawn against that approved total. So you're going to see these definitions kind of mix their way into these subsequent slides. The next slide is going to talk about, these are formula grants. So it's important to state that each of the iterations of grants had 90% had to go out based on formula. And that formula was based on a prior Title I Part A allocation. The nine and a half percent was considered discretionary. So what we're demonstrating here is only the formula, the 90% by formula that went out to local districts in Michigan. And you'll see in the, as we move forward through this, an ESER I formula, 350 million plus was allocated. You'll see that nearly all of that was budgeted, which we would expect. And then nearly all of the budgeted amounts were approved by the department, again, what we would expect. You'll notice that when ESER II or the CRESSA funds came about, now we were just shy of 1.5 billion as opposed to 350 million. The, the increase is significant. You'll notice that of that 1.49 billion, 1.488 was budgeted by local districts and we approved nearly all of those budgeted amounts. American Rescue Plan significantly higher yet, nearly 3.35 million of that, and this is current. So it's still functioning today, right? They can still obligate funds for the next three and a half months or so. So lots of work being done. But 3.35 million, billion, of which 3.27 billion has currently been budgeted and 3.256 billion has actually been approved. So in total, across the bottom, you'll see, and again, these are just for the formula. They do not include any of the discretionary or other one-off grant funding sources that we've had about 5.1, just shy of 5.2 billion dollars allocated, 5.1 that's been budgeted and nearly 5.1 that's been approved to this point. The slide, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. On the next slide here, you'll see the formula grant summary. And within that, you're going to see, based upon the amount of money that's been allocated and/or awarded, how much of that has been budgeted by the LEAs. The very first line is the ESER I CARES. Of that total amount that's been allotted or awarded to LEAs, 99.99% has been budgeted. After the Department of Education did their review or our review, 99.96% has been approved for use. When you go down to the second iteration, ESER II or the CRESSA, of the allocated amount, 99.83% was budgeted by LEAs. And of that, 99.99% was approved by the department for use. The American Rescue Plan, which as Mr. Walters and Ms. Golzinski mentioned, is still active until September 30th, 2024. The allocated amount was 97.63% by LEAs, total approved by the department, 99.55%. So in total, of all the funding, all the ESER funds that were given to LEAs for use, 98.42% has been budgeted and the Department of Education has been able to approve 99.71% for use. The next slide here is you're going to see the COVID dashboard of all ESER funding. This does include discretionary and reserve funds listed on here. The total amount of funding that's been awarded to the state of Michigan. 5.63 billion dollars has been allotted or allocated or awarded. In total, 4.74 billion dollars has been drawn down. Total remaining, 895.66 million dollars. Please note that if you were to look at this actual spreadsheet or this, this, this page here, you're going to see that the majority of funding that is still outstanding is for ESER III formula and there's still funding remaining for equalization funds for Section 11T. The slide here is for ESER I formula. Allocated and/or awarded is 350.44 million dollars. Total reimbursed, 348.92 million dollars. And total remaining or unspent was 1.51 million dollars. Of the ESER II or CRESSA, there was 1.48 billion dollars allocated or awarded. There was 1.48 billion reimbursed and total unspent or remaining was 6.92 million dollars. In ARP ESER III, there was 3.34 billion dollars allocated and/or awarded, reimbursed by the department, 2.55 billion, with a remaining balance of 789.3 million dollars. As I mentioned earlier, we still are in the ESER ARP until September 30th of 2024. So districts have the ability to draw down those funds until that period of time.
The next slide is going to break some of the use of funds category down between safety, virtual learning and instructional learning loss. And as, again, the first slide is going to encompass all three grants. And you'll notice that the use of funds for safety, these again, were heavily, heavily populated towards the first iteration in CARES Act, 44.5 million dollars. Virtual learning, 322 million dollars. And you'll see instructional and learning loss, 2.578 billion dollars has been budgeted and expended by Michigan districts with these funds. You'll notice that the average expenditure amounts in the middle column, ranging from 75, 76,000 to 96,000 in each expenditure. And then the per entity average of that spending of note is the 3.1 million dollars on average that districts in Michigan that receive funds spent to address instructional and learning loss through the pandemic funding. For ESER I and II, we wanted to break this down, the, again, the onset to mid-pandemic to take a look, similar slide, to look at how this has progressed. You'll notice of note was the commitment to learning loss, even though at the onset of the pandemic, we were, districts in Michigan were certainly trying to protect students, staff and visitors to the building, adhere to some of the safety measures and build infrastructure that may not have been existing prior to the pandemic itself. As we transition to ARP ESER III, you'll notice a significant increase particularly in learning loss. These are, as we transition out of mid-pandemic to post-pandemic from a stage, you'll notice that even though we are beyond what some would indicate requirement of safety, districts in Michigan were still expending funds towards safety, still expending funds towards supporting the option of hybrid virtual learning, but making a significant financial commitment to addressing learning loss and instructional services with these funds. Again, these are just for ARP. The previous dashboard that we showed were all of the grants. And I think it's important to know, again, budgeted a to know, again, budgeted amounts by category on the left-hand side of this screen to get an idea with the American Rescue Plan, by far the largest pot of funds to the state. But on the right-hand side, that use of funds, you'll see that Michigan had, you know, 59% of those funds were addressing learning loss and instructional services and needs, 22% for continuity of services, and then you'll see some other items as well. So this gives you a breakdown exactly of the use of funds and in what category those funds were used, specific to ARP. Now, within the American Rescue Plan, beyond just the funding requirements, there were a number of other specific programmatic requirements that needed to be adhered to locally. The first one we've talked about is that reservation to address the academic impact of lost instructional time. That's the 20% set aside that every district of all the funds they receive from American Rescue Plan funding must set aside 20% to address learning loss minimally. There's a maintenance of equity requirement for high-poverty schools. That included all schools. The definition of high-poverty schools included the highest poverty schools in your district individually. So the term is a little bit different federally. So districts in Michigan that received funds had to demonstrate in fiscal years '22 and fiscal year '23 that they met maintenance of equity for high-poverty schools. In other words, they were addressing the needs of high-poverty students in a similar fashion that they were addressing needs of all students in their district. The third item was an LEA Plan for Use of Funds. The LEA Plan for Use of Funds was a defined requirement. It required local districts to engage in meaningful consultation with local stakeholders to develop this plan. They had to document that these meetings took place and that they took into consideration their local stakeholders' interest in how these funds would be spent. And then inside the application that they submitted to the Department of Education for review was actually a narrative page that asked them to create this LEA plan. Those plans have to be posted on each individual website and should be updated as they progress through the grant itself. And then finally, there's a Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity Service Plan. This is separate from the requirements in Michigan specifically. These are federal requirements that talk about how are you safely returning students back to in-person instruction? And then how are you maintaining the continuity of services at the district? These would be really in two lanes. The first lane will be instructional practice. How are you returning students? How are you delivering instruction? What does that look like at any point in time? The second path is going to be how are you adhering to CDC guidelines and other safety protocols in protecting students, staff, and visitors to your building? The rule, federal rule for Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity Service Plan is that within six months of your first receipt of funds, you have to post your initial plan and then review that. Local districts have to review that plan every six months through the life of the grant to see if required amendments or changes are needed. This slide is just going to demonstrate the amount of outreach and technical assistance that the department has provided, and you'll notice that we started documenting this in August of 2021. These are total formal events. These would be events that are either formal presentations, in-person presentations, or direct visits and time spent with individual districts that require technical assistance. You'll note that the middle column is the average per month. For the most part, there's roughly 20, roughly 20 days of work in a month, 20 to 25 days, and our current total is increasing. This was drawn prior to a number of events, so we are averaging about 14 formal events within that work month here at the department to provide technical assistance to make sure that our districts are spending the funds, make sure that they understand that they're allowable, and assisting them in any, anything that they need along the way. I have the honor of introducing Stephanie Long, Superintendent of Leland Public Schools, who's going to share how the impact of these funds has impacted their local districts. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here and share a little bit about our story of how we moved through COVID. So I'm going to go quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So Leland Public School is a very small, one-building rural school in northern Michigan in the Leland Island Peninsula. We're in Fishtown, if you've ever been up there, and we are really the hub of our community. You'll notice that that top photograph was a school that was not completed when COVID happened. We were in the midst of a construction project that was stalled when COVID happened, so I'll talk a little bit about some of our facilities challenges, but we are grateful that we were able to move in to that building in April of 2021. At the beginning of COVID, we were in a shared-time agreement with a local district. That shared-time agreement was ended during the COVID experience, so our enrollment fell from approximately 536 kids. We went down to about 450, and we are currently at about 435 students, which speaks to the next bullet point. In the 2021 year when COVID struck, we were an in-formula-funded district, but because of our tax base and our declining enrollment, we fell out of formula in 2022, which is where we currently exist, and that will help explain how we've been able to sustain some of the programs we were able to start with our COVID funds. And at the end of June of 2020, we were in serious financial jeopardy, facing all of the concerns of a district that was running out of funds. At the same time, we were managing a behind-schedule construction project, and oh yes, there was a pandemic, so we had some challenges. So when the money started to be allocated, we had some specific priorities. First and foremost was the safety and health of our students and our school community, our staff, and the people that would be visiting our building. We had a serious charge to provide online learning support for our teachers as well as for our students. That was a complete shift for us. We do not have an online academy. We don't necessarily provide online as a rule in our building. We do it for exceptions. When we can't provide instruction, we'll move kids to an online class, but they do those classes in our building and under the supervision of our teachers. So this was a huge shift for us as well. And then lastly, our major priority was to provide student assistance. It was really important for us that our students still feel connected to our staff and to our school community. That's a central point of who we are, is a small community school. And because we're located in Leland County with significant dead zones in, at the time, cellular and wireless access, it was really important for us that we put structures and supports in place that our students still felt connected to our school and could still perform. So when all told, when we looked at the amount of money through those three different pots of money, we received about $226,234 total allocated among those three pots that you already heard. So when we started to think about the concerns that we had, primarily, we wanted to make certain that our building, when we brought our kids back into the building, would be a safe place for them. We wanted to ensure that we had trained teachers who knew how to deliver instruction in an online synchronous format, which was, again, something completely new for everybody. We wanted to be sure that our students were continuing to get fed. We have between 37 at the time and 40% students in our district qualify for free and reduced lunch, so it was a significant concern for us that for many of our students, two meals a day happen in our building every day. So we wanted to be sure that we could provide appropriate support with meals and with some family supports that were needed. We wanted to be certain that the schedule of spending that we created would allow for sustainability. Remember, at the time, we had no idea how long COVID was going to last, and we wanted to be sure that we could sustain whatever efforts we put in place for them. It also provided us really an opportunity to look at the supports that we had wanted to provide that we couldn't because of funding, and once we put those in place, we wanted to ensure that even after COVID, we could continue to provide those stopgaps that we knew that we needed, but we weren't able, in a position at the time, to provide. And then you can see there were some other opportunities there to build some models of social-emotional learning support, some behavior support, and some academic intervention. So in that first round that came, the first $24,000, we had just recently received some funds for a 31N grant that required a 20% contribution from the district, so that allowed us to hire our academic interventionist to at least get that ball rolling. We also knew right away that we had students who were already behind grade level in reading and literacy at the early grade levels, so we developed a summer intervention program in which we identified our most vulnerable learners for reading, and we were able to use some funds to hire teachers to come during the summer and provide small group, when I say small, like one teacher to four students, really intensive literacy instruction for our first and second grade students. We, at the time, did not have an SEL, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum on board, so we were able to do a little research and find a program that we thought we could sustain even after COVID, but this allowed us to at least get the ball rolling with that, and we have since built that into our advisory program. We've changed vendors, but we still have that program, so that's great for us. We knew that all of this effort, we, when school closed on Friday, March 13th, and the world stood still, our program was up and running on Monday, the following weekend. So we had no downtime whatsoever. We were able to mobilize because our students already had one-to-one devices, and you'll see in another slide, we were able to then enable those devices with cellular access and provide students the ability to continue their learning as quickly as that Monday back. But that took a lot of time, so we were able to use some of these funds to pay for our staff to do some overtime. Our technology team, our custodial team, and our administrative team, principal, and support people needed some time to make all this happen. With that next pot of money that came in as a per-pupil allocation, that was a significant pot of money for us, and you'll notice that there are two bulleted points there in bold. Again, those SIM cards that we were able to provide for our student devices enabled our kids, even those who didn't necessarily have access at their homes, to drive to a place where they could pick up a signal, because we had enabled those devices for them to get some cellular. We also provided, as many schools did, hotspots and other forms of technology for kids to be able to get on. The other significant expense with that pot of money was bipolar ionization units. At the time, all the research was telling us that our air quality needed to be improved, and because we were under construction, we were already at a disadvantage because our new mechanical room hadn't been completely finished yet. So we were able to install bipolar ionization in our entire HVAC system and every one of our air handling units to ensure that when we did bring kids back into the building, that they would be breathing some clean air. And then with that last pot of money, we really just, we needed all the stuff. I mean, the reality was, we had no masks. We had no way to keep our kids separated from one another. We turned our gym into a cafeteria. We put up these plexiglass dividers, and all of our kids were able to be, we actually brought kids back into the building in September of 20, in half-days, so we ran a hybrid model where all of our students did online learning from their homes in the morning in a synchronous way with our teachers who were in their classrooms. Then we sent our buses out in the afternoon. We brought kids in for lunch, and then they got one-on-one support, or they were able to go meet with teachers in those classrooms in small groups to get some specific intention, and we invited our most vulnerable learners into our buildings from the very first day. We created what we called a learning center. We hired two staff members, and we brought in primarily all of the members, all the children of our staff members, who had nowhere to go because their parents were teaching in our building, and any vulnerable learner whose parents could not afford to stay home with their kids. Those kids needed to come to our building, so we were able to feed them, and we were able to provide supervision for them while they did their morning online learning. And then with all of these supplies, we were able to provide bag lunches and masks and all the other stuff that we needed so that they could be in our space. Thank you, Board. With that, we'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, MDE leaders. We appreciate your presentation. Board members, questions, comments, concerns, reflections? I do call on people if there's an awkward silence. Ms. Lipton?
Thank you. In terms of the, there's been a lot of discussion about this sort of fiscal cliff that we're going to be approaching in terms of the September 30th, 2024 deadline, and then the December 30th, 2024 deadline. From your standpoint, it sounds to me like you've been able to manage the funds that you've spent so that there isn't going to be such a huge disturbance coming up. Could you just expand a little bit on that? Am I reading too much into it? I mean, it sounds like you're going to be in good shape.
We are. And one of the things that we did was, we looked at all the other sources of funding that was going to be available as well, and we ensured that the funding, the COVID funding that we used would be for first and foremost, one-time expenses that we knew we were going to need to keep the kids safe, and then the additional funds that we used to hire people. So we hired an academic interventionist, we hired a behavior interventionist, a school counselor. We started with a social worker. We have since, and this speaks to that point, all of those things that we did, because we knew we needed those people to provide the support, and we knew that that money was going to run out. So the first thing that we did is we scheduled the money to last as long as it conceivably could, so we didn't spend it all at one time. And then we, while that money was being spent, we were pursuing other sources of money to replace it. And so now that we have spent all of our money, all of those people are still employed with us because we've gone after other sources of grants and funding to support those services.
Okay, so you're not expecting any, you know, massive layoffs or changes?
No. As a matter of fact, we are hopeful that those other sources of funding, for example, that 31N pot that I mentioned, or 31O, or some of the other sources of funds, will, that really were born during this crisis. We're hoping that those things will continue because we've clearly proven a need for those people, and our students are better as a result of this programming that we've put in place, and so we'd like to see that continue.
You said something that I thought was really intriguing. You talked about, even before the pandemic, your school being the center point of the community, the hub of the community, and that sounds to me very much about a model that I've been very interested in called the Community Schools Model. And do you feel that the fact that that model was in existence before, that that was able to help you withstand this crisis, or really any crisis?
Yeah.
By harnessing the resources in a more of an efficient way?
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily harnessing the capital resources, but we were definitely able to harness the human resources. Our community feels very connected to our school, and COVID was devastating because we couldn't have people in the building. The people that used to come in and participate in the day-to-day life of our building, we had to say, no, you can't come in. And that was a significant challenge for everybody because we were accustomed to the partnership and the support, and they were accustomed to feeling connected and in the know in terms of what was going on in the day-to-day life of the school that you can only really understand when you're in a building. So we immediately put together what we called our COVID Task Force. That task force, I think, was born on March 14th, and it included parents and students and our teachers and community leaders, and those, that community task force was charged with developing a model of instruction that would meet the needs of each of those individual stakeholder groups. So the model, that hybrid model that we launched was a direct result of the collaboration and the partnership and the willingness of everybody, number one, to brainstorm and figure out something that would work, but then also of everybody acknowledging that we couldn't do this by consensus. We weren't going to get 100% agreement. And so we elicited as much input as we can, we could, and then we asked that task force to sift through it and develop a model that would meet as many conceivable needs as we could. We weren't, we knew that we, for example, could not offer an online academy. We didn't have the resources, financial or human, to do that. But what could we do to provide online education for the families that wanted to keep their kids home? So we used some of our COVID funds then to connect with a vendor that was able to provide what we felt were resources, online classes, that we could give kids in a one-off or a two-off, or we also purchased a program called CSO. We don't use it anymore, but it was helpful at the time to get our teachers, they could load their coursework online, and we allowed students who wanted an exclusive online experience to do it in that way. But it was only because we had so much input from so many different people, and we had so many people at the table trying to sift through all that information and make really personal and community-based decisions that would serve as many people as we could.
Just out of curiosity, is that task force something that is continuing to operate? Because I know that, you know, different community school models that I've been looking at in Michigan or even in other states, they do seem to really focus on a community school task force advisory committee that sort of stays in existence. So I'm just curious if that's something that is continuing to operate in your district?
It's not in that form. It has morphed. So we have since gone through a major strategic planning process, and we put together an old-school school improvement team with parent and student and staff representatives. So they are really charged with implementing this district-level strategic plan, and then from there, we have a leadership team within the building that takes their charge, actually just getting launched, in that capacity. But we also, something beautiful that came out of that as well is, we did not have a formal PTO or a formal parent organization, and that group of parents has since decided, hey, this is a did not have a formal PTO or a formal parent organization. And that group of parents has since decided, hey, this is a way for us to rally together and provide this sort of input. And they show, they come to every board meeting. I go to their meetings. So that's been a beautiful development as a result of that. We also did significant weekly town halls via Zoom through the entire pandemic and into that second year, where I would literally just get on a Zoom call and anybody who wanted to ask questions or participate could jump on. And we, we morphed those into topic-based. So when they were done talking about COVID and they didn't want to hear it anymore, then we could start to talk about individual topics. So I would post a topic and I'd host the Zoom. And we had as few as 15 and as many as 130 parents who would participate in those calls. And again, for a school of 430 kids, that's a significant level of participation.
That's 430 K through 12?
Yes. Yes. In one building. Yes.
Amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. McMillan?
Look at that $5 billion. That's a lot of money. As far as how it's spent, how transparent is it? The, the dashboards or, can you drill down and see specific expenditures all the way down to the checkbook level? Can we find out which organizations got, you know, is it aggregated by names of people, by groups and organizations? So we can see, you know, at least behind these organizations that got it. Is, is it, is it that kind of transparent?
From the dashboard level, we're, we stop at, at a certain level, Mr. McMillan, relative to the use of funds and the category that the funds are in. Now, every year, every district on all of their fundings required to file their financial infrastructure database, their FID at the end of the year that comes in November. That will provide significantly more detail about where those funds were spent, as an example, elementary, middle school, high school. The level of transparency locally, generally, most local boards, monthly, will have a full transparent dissemination of how they expended those funds, who the funds were spent. They're not required necessarily to provide that level of detail to us, but they should be providing that locally. That's a responsibility that would be at the local level.
Okay. And so all $5 billion of this, it was spent at local levels. Nothing was at a state level or regional level or anything like that?
No. All the funds demonstrated in the, what we've presented today were all allocated to local districts and spent by local districts and then reimbursed for those spending because they're federal funds.
And then, again, $5 billion's a lot of money. What, what can we see as far as results? And not, not anecdotally, but, you know, I mean, intentions are nice. You know, $2, $2 billion or 50% of it going towards learning loss. Is there any proof that actually learning loss got better on a macro level, on a, not a, again, not a, not on a anecdotal level, but did this money help? What's the specific statistics that we can point to to say is, yeah, this $2.5 billion that went to learning loss wasn't just, you know, nice intentions, but didn't really do anything?
From our standpoint, we'll engage in programmatic monitoring. To be quite honest, the statistical information is going to roll out. We're, we're still within two or three years now, three years now, of the onset of this pandemic and these funds going out. So statistically, those will become important figures to look, data to look at moving forward.
We won't know. I mean, this actually might not have had any help, but we won't know that for a few more years.
I would say statistically, you're in a range right now of gathering that information in long-term, mid to long-term, that data's going to start to present those things. I will say, as Superintendent Long mentioned, that the, the, the one thing that this funding did locally relative to instructional programs was to cause the local district to look closely at programs that they may have been funded, funding otherwise, to see if it is producing some results that they can see short-term locally. And then, as, as Superintendent Long mentioned, they start to transition to look at other ways to fund those things to make sure that those trends continue. But to be, to be completely honest, I don't, I don't see, we don't have an answer today relative to that impact. Although certainly there are other things, standardized testing, localized testing, all of these other indicators are going to be at some point reflective of whether the decisions the districts made during the pandemic with these funds have proven to be successful.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, potentially successful. I guess it's not going to prove that other ways of using it would have been more successful. It's just whether these were
Right. We don't have a counterfactual. School districts haven't spent the money in two ways and we don't have the ability concurrently to determine which way was better than another.
Well, potentially, we kind of do. If we can say, you know, they spent $1 million here and as much as I'm not a fan of standardized testing, some, some type of measurement showed that there was a boost of, you know, half a grade level. And this one, the $1 million, was a quarter of a grade level. And I mean, it's, you know, on a macro level, you might get to draw some kind of inferences, and I don't know if those will be available at some point.
Well, there are, there are organizations, including Epic at, at MSU, that have done some work in this area and will continue to do some work in this area. This is going to be data mined for the next decade, as Mr. Walters mentioned. But the reality is, it's not simply how you spent the money, but who was in the particular roles. So, for example, Superintendent Long and I may be local school superintendents. We may have implemented the exact same strategies. Her tutors may have been stronger than, than my tutors, her teachers stronger than my teachers, and she might have gotten more impact out of them than, than, than I did. I see Dr. Pritchett head bobbing with her four-decade educational career. You know, all, all people aren't created equal. And even if you spend the dollars ostensibly in the same ways, you don't necessarily get ostensibly the same outcomes. You have other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
I think this conversation is relatively foolish, to be honest with you, because the biggest indicator that what we did during COVID didn't work is disenrollment. How many students have left public education and haven't come back? Bridge reported, and you can go to Bridge and see what your local school district is dealing with. And almost every single local school district in the state of Michigan is dealing with the kind of disenrollment that puts us into multimillion-dollar deficits. So what Ellen said about the concept of a fiscal cliff that we're staring at is the most significant indicator that what we did during COVID didn't work. So even the students that we have left behind that Tom is talking about in terms of how to measure whether or not the dollars we spent worked, for those students that are still in public education, the question can be answered with how many students left public education and haven't come back. And so that is absolutely going to hurt those who are still in public education. What we did during COVID absolutely didn't work. And I think the numbers are already telling us that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Anyone else care to share? Ms. Long?
I, I, I agree, right? Attendance is a big issue. And we, I think, though, we also have to consider that one of the things that COVID did was redefine our entire, the entire scope of how we do business in this country. Businesses changed, schools changed. The way in which people imagined life to be prior to COVID ended. And not only just did they imagine it, they lived it. And that all stopped. And then I think what happened for many families is they realized there was a different way to do things. I had families that were deeply committed to our school, who during COVID were able to get in an RV and drive across the country and spend an extensive amount of time with their children. And they realized, oh, this is kind of cool. How can we build this in? I now have families that will travel for two or three weeks at a time, which is unheard of prior to COVID, because they learned something about their family and the way in which they lived their lives that they didn't believe, didn't even imagine prior to COVID. So I, I think that the, at least for, for our school, the, the financial support that we received, number one, allowed us to keep our doors open. We would not have been able to stay open absent that money. And so for the students that we were serving, I would say we were wildly successful, as long as we defined success by supporting and keeping kids engaged in a process that we otherwise would have lost entirely. And then I think one of the other things that allowed us to do was to do some data mining and to do, look at research. And one of the things that we noticed is when our students came back full-time after the hybrid model that we had run, our behaviors went through the roof. Behaviors went bananas in our building. We saw things that we had never seen in our little school before. And one of the things that that told us was that formal day-to-day school helps raise kids in a way that they can function in a, in a society. And left to their own sort of wild, I'm out here in the world with no structure and no guidance and no support, because my parents are off trying to make a living and I'm left to my own devices, they didn't know how to function in a group setting for quite a while. And, and we used some of that COVID money to hire a very skilled behavior interventionist who put a program in place called The Solving Space, which we still use today. And we moved away from suspension because our suspensions, if, if we had held to our same disciplinary practices that we were using prior to COVID, after COVID, we wouldn't have anybody left in the building. And it taught us immediately that we had to teach kids how to behave again. They had missed the sequence and the formative development that comes with being in a formalized school setting, how to get along with others, how to wait my turn, how to delay gratification. All of those things became so glaringly apparent that it forced us to take a step back and say, okay, our test scores might struggle for a little while, but we have to go back to helping kids figure out how to be in our schools again. So I would say the finances were incredibly powerful and successful for us. We couldn't have done it otherwise. And those models that we were able to put in place are models that we were then able to say, like I said, for CSO, some of them were great and some of them we didn't need anymore. So we could let things go and replace those things with systems that we knew were sustainable that, that could address the new concerns that we were facing. Because I think if we judge public school students and the success of public schools after COVID in the same way that we did prior to COVID, well, of course, we're going to see something significant. It was a seismic global shift. There's no way to get out of that. The trick in my mind is to figure out how to then use those funds to build new systems to support kids in the ways that we're going to need to now that we didn't have to prior.
Which is very fair, because COVID created such a significant situation. Michigan ranks 43rd in literacy and 34th in math.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
It's, it's significantly concerning.
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent. I, I, I think there was a, an agreement around the seismic shift around the pandemic, not necessarily where we are with ranks. Dr. Pugh?
I have to breathe very deeply and talk very slowly because every time we venture into this conversation where millions of lives were lost, millions of, tens of millions of children across the globe were orphaned, hundreds of thousands in this state, don't have caregivers, don't have parents who are yet here existing. And us dismissing that fact, no, we don't have data. And I hope that we never have the data that's able to compare this global pandemic to anything that we've just seen. And again, to educators such as yourself, for doing what you did and bringing communities together to do that, thank you. Thank you. And our children, we, we will fight to make sure that they get a sense of normalcy, something that they experienced that we never had to experience at that age. I always, I just didn't have to think that the world would fall apart like that. And the toll that that must take on our children, waking up every day, just wondering if that's going to happen, that sense of protection and some sense that their parents or family members control their fate versus they can wake up and there's this virus that takes over the whole world. And for us to dismiss that, it is, it just boggles my mind. But just a few questions. You mentioned the social emotional supports that were needed. Were you seeing those pre-March 13th, 2020? I did, I was mixing up the dates and the timeline.
Yeah.
And your districts, where you all were with students, and I, you said that there was a building that was being built, like, just trying to get a greater sense of timeline of where some of these issues, where you were with these issues, pre and post-COVID?
Yeah. So pre-COVID, we knew that we needed another counselor. We knew that we needed another social worker. We knew that we had kids with significant needs that weren't being addressed because we just financially didn't have the resources to put those services in place. And then, and then there was COVID, and it provided us what I consider to be the booster, right? So we had the booster chair, was the COVID funding. And the need became abundantly apparent that we needed more support, not just the academic support, but the, at the fine granular level, student support for how were they managing the deaths of, in their families? How were they managing this increase in anxiety? How were our, our kids managing the separation from their peer groups that was feeding their sense of identity? That now I'm sitting in a bedroom all by myself. The isolation and the fear that that, that seed that was planted, we knew was only going to get worse. And so we did then hire another counselor and we hired a social worker and we hired a behavior interventionist, in addition to making our academic interventionist full-time. So we went from essentially having one part-time title teacher and one guidance counselor to a team of five people that could support kids from every one of those different angles. And we worked our MTSS process to the death. I mean, we created a heat map of every single student in our building and we ranked every single one of them based on needs. And if it was a tier-one issue, then we paid with COVID funds for the professional development for our teachers to get the literacy instruction that they needed at the, in the classroom level. If it was a tier-two level, we had our new counselor and our behavior interventionist. If it was a tier-three issue, we now had a social worker and eventually a nurse. We then went out and partnered with our local health department, and we were able to bring in a health clinic that now lives in my building with a full-time social worker and a full-time nurse, that once that COVID money ran out, that was the replacement so that we didn't have to lose those support services. So yes, that social emotional learning has been the cornerstone of what we've been doing. We truly, truly believe in our space that we have to, we have to acknowledge all of these barriers that the kids are facing and put systems in place to mitigate those barriers so that when they do walk into our classroom, they're available for the learning that's happening there. We also made a vocal and clear, clearly articulated goal that we were not suspending kids out of school, because we knew that the moment we sent them back home, we were losing the opportunity to teach the skills that they were missing to be successful in our classrooms. So we had to get okay with the idea that kids were going to misbehave, and the consequence wasn't going to look the same after COVID as it may have looked prior to COVID. So we invested in trauma-informed professional development, culturally relevant and responsive pedagogy. We, we invested in restorative practice training. So for two years, that's what our professional development work has been around, is how do we surround kids with all of the needs that they have in such a way that when they do walk into the classroom, they're ready to be there. And in the event that they start to elevate or fall apart, we have places and people ready in the moment to address those behaviors and get them back into the classroom. So the data that you're mentioning, for example, we chart time out of the classroom. Prior to COVID, how many minutes was a student spending outside of the classroom to deal with discipline? Now that the system is in place, how have we reduced those numbers? So a student who may have had to spend two or three hours out of the classroom, we've got it down to about 10 to 17 minutes. That's a pretty significant data point for us.
Right. And, and I know, you know, just in the district that I live in, we were, we had resources to kind of start looking at the needs of social emotional learning. This was prior to, to even the Flint water crisis, because we knew that there, we knew that there was, there was a need. And everybody probably just didn't have the planning, so that when the unfortunate happened and then there were resources that they knew exactly where to put those resources. But to Board Member Lipton's point, you all were kind of already planning ahead.
And I'll mention that our scale is tiny.
Yes. Yes.
One building, K-12, 430 families.
Yes. Yes.
Districts that have 15 and 20 different buildings, trying to take these kinds of systems to scale, just, I mean, the money and the sources.
Let's see if, if Dr. Pugh has any more questions and we need to wrap.
I have, and I probably do have a list of them. But, but to that point, how was your community impacted by COVID at, at this, at the start to, you know, where we are now?
I, I will say that I'm, I think the impact was deep for many families. The separation from our school was
I'm sorry, I'm like, how many people died? How many people were ill? How many children lost life? How many educators did you lose? You know, because we lost a lot of life in like areas like Flint. You know, Flint was very hard hit when we first got started. My community, Saginaw, was very hard hit. So planning, you know, wasn't necessarily, we had to, you know, triage. And this was a real, a crisis in many of our communities. So I would imagine some communities would respond and react differently if you're having to if you're having to deal with, with dead bodies.
Right, and I will say thankfully, the loss of life that we experienced was more on the second level of family members, not necessarily directly. We had, we did have some students who lost a parent. Many lost grandparents, more lost friends of parents or grandparents. So we did not experience that level that many larger communities did. So what we experienced was a significant spectrum of belief around the severity of the disease and the willingness to, for example, vaccinate or adhere to protocol or stay quarantined or even report.
Right.
And so that became tricky. We were able to sort of withstand the first wave of the virus. We were, it was in November of 20 that we really finally got hit hard. And that was, we ended up having to go home. We, our staff was sick, our kids were sick, our families were sick. And that was, that was pretty significant.
And then I think as we got better with how we could respond to COVID, when we got the pharmaceutical mitigation in place, it, it was different. But if we had another district that was sitting there and they were just trying to keep people alive, then, then the story would be different as far as, as, you know, how the planning went in place. And to that, I guess to that question, how do you, how do, how did this date, September, the deadline date, determine how you would spend dollars? I mean, would you have spent dollars differently if the timeline was longer? Would you have had the opportunity? And I, you know, and I wonder that for other districts who didn't have some of the time upfront as well as the plan, the planning thoughts as well.
I would say the money that was expiring first was the money that we spent first on infrastructure and one-time expenses that we needed because we knew it wasn't going to be around. And so we just, we just literally looked at the deadlines. And then we also looked at what were the allowable expenses? And we, we literally played a shell game. We listed all of our needs and we just started moving them into the pots that they would fit. And, and based on, was it an allowable expense? And how long would we be able to have the money? And what was the system that we wanted? Was it a one-time or was it something we wanted to sustain? Was it a short term? And, and literally pulled up a spreadsheet, listed the pots of money and started shelling all of our needs. We would drag them from a cell and drop it into this hole over there and drag this one and drag that one. And then we would fill out these applications and, you know, it was, it was very much a chess match game.
Thank you. And just the September 30th date, just one last question. Does, do the dollars have to be procured or service and product received?
The September 30th date is obligation deadline, is performance period obligation. The funds had to be obligated by September 30th. They have until December 30th to fully liquidate or take possession of whatever was ordered before that point.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Tilly.
I think most of my thoughts were addressed through conversation, but it started when you gave a very thoughtful explanation of how you guys adjusted to the global pandemic. And I, I just commend you guys for being very intentional and, and implementing moving forward. Because the global pandemic changed, it was a global pandemic, changed everything everywhere. And so for us to like try to assess what worked, doesn't work, what happened. I mean, you, you had mentioned about the behaviors. But I'll take it even a step further about behaviors, about just our normal adolescent behaviors. We were put on pause. And so now you have people who haven't necessarily been triggered in their, they don't even know they got PTSD or trauma because they leave the house every day and they're free to move about for nine, 10 hours a day when they come home. But when you're trapped in the house with an oppressor or a person who's, so those things trigger you and there's other trauma that triggers. So now that I'm back out, those things, I act out. And so that's additional to just being an adolescent scared, isolated at home. Now I got this abuser or my mom's being, just, there's all these other factors that change how. But even employees, people have shut down office buildings. They're not using office buildings anymore. So, you know, everybody's working online and saving money, companies' money and things like that. So I just wanted to thank you guys for being thoughtful. Because you said it more as I see in Detroit is you guys got the K through 12. We got multiple high schools, multiple middle schools and not the proper funding historically. And so trying to catch up, trying to get all of this done. It's, 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 and it's a monumental task just from what you guys described. So it's, it's even on steroids in a bigger district like Detroit or the Western Wayne area. So I just wanted to thank you guys for, for being thoughtful enough to, to put that in motion and address those issues and verbally say it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Tilly?
Great job forecasting.
Oh, thank you.
And I, I've heard that there are a lot of behavioral issues that have increased since COVID. So, and I'm a big proponent for SEL, so that's excellent that you guys implemented a SEL program as well. Data takes about a decade to really trend well. So we, we won't know. But certainly we have, we won't know for a while, but certainly we have the Teacher of the Year here who is in a very different environment. So I wanted to actually hear from her maybe to get some of the differentiation from what she's experienced and what she's seen in the area, in the environment she's in in Detroit.
Lead me out of this.
Well, I mean, I would say for my district, we implemented a lot of different strategies to try and get the students back on track and to reduce the learning loss that was caused by COVID. And I know it's going to take a while to see, you know, statistically if the data is trending in the right way. But just for my building and for my district, we are trending in the right direction. I think that the data that we have seen for the last two years has shown that we've been outpacing the other districts. And I think that it's because we've been able to put some of these programs into play. I think the difficulty is going to be now that the ESAR funds are ending, how to sustain some of these initiatives that we started? And I think that's going to be the big challenge because even with this past school year, we've scaled back on some of the things that we were doing that showed the success, that made the gains. And now we're pulling those programs back and you can already see that the progress is staying stagnant, if not going down just a little bit as the programming and the funding is going away.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Tilly.
Thank you.
Anything more for the good of the group? Presenters, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Number 24, the next item on today's agenda is a presentation on structural budget balance. Presentation on structural budget balance will outline the potential financial issues that local school districts may experience as state revenue growth begins to slow and federal pandemic relief funding comes to an end. Presentation will focus on considerations for local school districts navigating the post-pandemic budgeting process. This presentation is for informational purposes. No action is required. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Diane Golzinski and I will co-present.
Oh, I thought you were going to stay down there and bookend.
The board members, this presentation is in the spirit of myth busting because what happens in a district does not necessarily happen in 800 districts. Does not necessarily happen in almost 900 districts. The importance and complexity of structural budget balance. Structural budget balance is the financial condition when recurring revenue is equal to or greater than recurring expenditures. Recurring revenue equal to or greater than recurring expenditures. It's different from simple budget, budget, budget balance where you are talking about revenue equal to or greater than expenditures. Any revenue equal to or greater than expenditures. This is recurring, greater than recurring, and that's the important piece here. Some of you may recall from your schoolwork, Animal Farm by George Orwell, in which Orwell says, "All animals are equal, but some are more equal than others." You could do by analogy, Ms. Jackson, "All dollars are equal, but some are more equal than others." A dollar may be nominally the same as another dollar. But a recurring dollar has more worth than does a non-recurring dollar. Let's give a simple example of the power of recurring versus non-recurring. You make $50,000 a year on a job. Your aunt gives you $5,000 a year for each of two years. You spend exactly $55,000 a year in recurring household expenditure. All seems well until the third year. Your aunt dies, she leaves you nothing in the will. That $5,000 per year evaporates. You now have the $50,000 in recurring revenue and salary. You still have $55,000 in recurring household expenditures. You are out of not only simple budget balance, but more importantly, out of structural budget balance. Your recurring revenue is $5,000 below your recurring expenditures. You have a structural problem in your household budget. Actually, your aunt's passing revealed what had been the case before she died, that you had a structural balance problem in your household budget. She was propping up your budget with a non-recurring source of revenue. When she died, it became obvious that there was this structural problem in your revenue base. This is what Ms. Jackson referred to implicitly in what she was saying a few minutes ago to Ms. Tilly's question. There are six issues we'd like to address today. The looming deadline for spending non-recurring federal pandemic relief funding, which, which our presenters a few minutes ago presented on the slowing, but still very, very healthy state revenue growth. The fact that some districts may have chosen to assume fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 budget percentage increases for the duration of multi-year labor contracts. The fact that fund balances may have grown, which in general is a good thing, but actually can cut both ways. The need for strong communication around structural budget balance. And then finally, moving from a structural deficit to structural budget balance. We talked at great length about ESAR I, II, and III funding in the state of Michigan. More than $5 billion allocated to our local school districts. But know that the amount of federal pandemic relief was so high and the need to spend so relatively quick that some districts felt the need to use the non-recurring revenue on recurring expenditures. Well, what are recurring expenditures in public school districts? Well, primarily, those recurring expenditures, primarily, not exclusively, are on people. Because we as a, as a system are primarily a people-driven system. Between 80 and 90% of the typical school district's budget is spent on people. So if you hustle up and spend more quickly on recurring expenditures with non-recurring funding, what are you spending on? You're spending on people. Current situation is going to be particularly difficult for those districts that felt that they had no choice but to spend relatively quickly, given the volume of the funds relative to their, their district size on recurring expenditures. And didn't plan or didn't plan well, Dr. Cornell, for the moment. A second issue that's taking place is the issue around state revenue growth. State revenue growth was, was profound in fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24. We had the best two budgets in our state's post-proposal A history. That is to say, in the last 30 years, in fiscal year '23, fiscal year '24. So props to the legislature, to the governor, to those in the education community, to this board that made the case for more funding. Made the case for the fact that we had historically been underfunded and we needed to up our game from a financial perspective. But fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24, if a new normal were a short-term new, new normal. They weren't a new normal in perpetuity, Dr. Chapman. So if a local school district began to feel as if fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 were harbingers for all the out-years, they ran the risk of making decisions and could still make decisions that can get them into trouble in the, in the out-years. So this is most clear when you look at multi-year labor agreements. So some districts may have chosen, some districts did choose, to enter into multi-year labor agreements. I worked in a local school district that had annual labor agreements for many, 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 many years. And the business administrator felt, I felt, that you could best determine what was available in any given year, if you knew the revenue prior to negotiating in any given year. It was a conservative approach to making sure that we didn't overspend, Dr. Pritchett, our recurring revenue. But some districts enter into multi-year agreements and some districts in this moment may have entered into multi-year agreements premised on the notion that the percentage increases from fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 were going to materialize in the out-years of those multi-year labor agreements. If they do, not a problem. If they don't, there most assuredly is a problem. And so what you, what you have now for some districts is they may have had agreements in '23, '24, and '25. They may have had agreements '24, '25, and '26. You agree on 7% for three years, 7% annually, that is to say, 7% per year for three years. Your first 7% materializes and then you end up with smaller percentage increases. In the out-years, you've got a structural balance issue, all else being equal. It's really critical for school district labor and management to work very, very closely with one another during this, during this period of our financial history. Fund balances may have grown, board. And in general, we think of fund balance as growing as a good thing. You have a little bit more protection against downturns in the economy. You have a little bit more protection against a roof that caves in if you don't have a capital millage or sinking fund. On, all, all else being equal, a little bit more fund balance is, is, is helpful. But you run into a circumstance now where your fund balance could be increasing at a moment where you need to cut your budget. And that's extraordinarily difficult for people to understand. The notion of a rising fund balance in a given fiscal year while you are setting a budget for the next fiscal year and having to cut to structurally balance in that following year. Remember, fund balance is by definition a non-recurring source of revenue. No fair-putting salary or other recurring benefits on fund balance. One times, yes, but not recurring expenditures on fund balance. So this confluence in the moment for some districts of a rising fund balance and the need to pare back in order to structurally balance the budget is going to be challenging both from a financial perspective, a financial and political perspective, but also from a communications perspective as well. To the point of communication, it's really, really critical that people understand the difference between simple budget balance and structural budget balance. They are not the same. That you can pay all your bills and that you can pay all your bills enduringly are two very, very different things. It's one thing, you know, you go back to that simple budget example that I shared where, where Auntie... where, where Auntie helped you out for two years. You had budget balance those first two years with her providing $5,000 a year. The issue was not whether you had budget balance in years 1 and 2. The issue was whether you had structural budget balance in years 1 and 2. You didn't. Your recurring revenue was not equal to or greater than your recurring expenditures. And the fact that you didn't have structural budget balance became very, very clear when Auntie passed and that $5,000 disappeared. Now, that $5,000 was not recurring revenue in the first place. So you weren't structurally balanced in the first place. But when you fell out of simple budget balance, it made you reflect upon the fact that you were also out of structural budget balance. You have to share these terms if you're a local school superintendent in your local community. Your board has to understand them. Your community has to understand them. Your labor unions have to understand them. They have to understand, everybody has to understand whether you are currently running a surplus or a deficit. You feel like, you know, in May and June, as you're setting the budget for the next school year, you're-ish going to run a surplus or a deficit. It is-ish a recurring surplus or a recurring deficit. And as importantly, what does the future look like for '25? Because you may be in this paradoxical situation of being able to report a rising fund balance and the need to cut. And the need to cut not simply with a trim, but the need to cut more profoundly. So when you talk about communication, the communication has to be very, very close with the local school board. It must be very, very close with your local labor unions and you have to have a strong conversation with your, with your local community or communities. But I do want to be clear that a lot of, a lot of people have suggested that we're going off a financial cliff in the state. That is not accurate. That is most assuredly hyperbolic. There are many school districts that have taken very, very great pains to continue to match recurring revenue with recurring expenditures over a period of the last few years. And they will continue to do so as they craft their fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 budgets. There are some that may be, may have a light structural imbalance, but are able to correct that light structural imbalance as they move into fiscal year '25. There are some districts, not hundreds of districts across the state, but there are some districts in the state that are going to struggle with structural balance in fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 for a whole host of reasons. The movement out of the federal pandemic relief funding, the movement away from using those non-recurring dollars for recurring expenditures, the movement from extraordinary state revenue growth to simply healthy state revenue growth, the fact that for many districts, they may have entered into obligations, labor obligations, that they can't sustain. So this is going to be a moment for some districts, but not for all. Sometimes we see something in a district or two districts or a handful of districts or a dozen districts. And we assume that this is the new normal, that this is the new challenge for local school districts. Many districts have kept up just fine. Many districts didn't have a lot of pandemic relief funding. Our superintendent today had $226,000 in three pandemic relief packages. Her bigger challenge associated with structural budget balance is not the pandemic relief funding. It's the loss of young people associated with the shared time agreements within her community. So different districts have different financial challenges. The significant majority of districts are going to navigate this moment just fine. And they are going to be able to largely maintain staffing just fine, in part because we've done a very, very strong job with the state legislature, with the governor, with their support, with the advocacy of the education community, the state board, the state department, of pushing for more enduring funding. We've said at this table repeatedly that we not only have been billions of dollars underfunded, but we remain billions of dollars underfunded, notwithstanding the best two budgets of the last 30 years of the post-proposal A era. So I share this with you because oftentimes people see something happening in a single district and assume that it's happening in their district and districts across the state. I got an outreach from someone who was concerned about whether I'd been harmed by the tornadoes. And I said, "No, not, not harmed by the tornadoes." But the tornadoes were, were bad. And if you were reading about the tornadoes in New Jersey, you assumed that Michigan got picked up by the tornadoes and unceremoniously deposited in one of our great lakes. But that wasn't the case. The tornadoes were very disruptive in certain communities, including close to my home community, but not in my home community. And I think the same is true here with this mix of financial challenges that we have. Many districts are going to navigate this new normal, this new, new normal with, with relatively few challenges they've been keeping up with. They haven't gotten a lot of pandemic relief funding. They haven't engaged in long-term obligations. If they have, they've been careful about what those long-term obligations are so as not to overextend themselves. Others may struggle with this new, new normal. And I just leave you with that, that reference from Animal Farm again. Some animals equal, all animals equal, some more equal than others. All dollars equal, some more equal than others. All else being equal, it's better to have recurring revenue than non-recurring revenue. And Dr. Gozinski and I would be, be happy to answer your questions. I'll answer all the easy ones and she'll be happy to answer the harder ones. Thank you.
Oh, oh. I am?
You're, you're. I mean, it's, who's going to say no to their board president?
Well, I'll start. I'll, I'll allow myself to speak.
Okay, please.
So I guess the, you know, thank you for breaking that down so simplistically. And that has been one of my concerns, is that we continue to hear historical budget, historical budget. And at our table, we've been able to hear what a historical budget means when there's been decades of, of cuts and, you know, not equitably and adequately funding our education system. But when I hear people in the local communities, it's hard for them to, to understand that. I would imagine it would be even difficult for the media to be able to articulate that and for those districts who are going to be seeing this COVID cliff as well as the, you know, the, the changes in revenue. And how can, is there any way that we can assist those local districts to be able to better explain to their communities what this means? That's one question. Part of the, part of what I also still can't wrap my, my head around is when we talk about the number of teachers that will, that will be lost around the state. And when I see that reported, I also see the thought that, oh, it's, it's okay because it really won't be teachers' loss. It may just be positions that are not filled. And when I think about some of the class sizes across the state, that is concerning for me. So do we have any type of pulse on how many teachers will be lost? How many mental health professionals will be lost? And I guess in more simplistic terms, like what does that mean for class sizes right now? Because pre-COVID, we had issues with class size. Even if we were able to change that and have more teachers in the building, that would be an issue. And then, you know, will teachers be able to put food on their table? So what does this look like across the state?
So, so I think there are a few things. First of all, Kevin Walters and Spencer Simmons and Dr. Gozinski spoke to the support that they've provided local school districts around ESER funding and by extension around the pivot off of ESER funding in, in the next, in the next few months relative to obligation and in the next two years thereafter relative to liquidation. So that's, that's one. Two, we've done, we've begun conversations around structural balance broadly with our superintendents across the state. For example, this was discussed at the last state board meeting. We shared out from that. We did a memorandum or guidance memo associated there with. I went to Education Alliance along with Dr. Carnell yesterday where we spoke with the ed org executive directors about structural balance. There was a press release around this. We've gotten eye level with particular superintendents. Last week, I was in a district speaking about structural balance with a superintendent, a board president, a chief financial officer. A couple of weeks earlier, I was doing the same thing in another district and the same, same was the case a couple of weeks before that. I know districts that have struggled financially and that are going to struggle, struggled financially historically and that are likely going to struggle coming out of this. So we're in their ears about what they can reflect upon to help balance budgets. But at the, at the end of the day, those hard decisions are decisions of boards and superintendents and other top staff members, along with unions at local school district, at local school levels. We can talk about the concepts around structural balance and we can help them think through, but they've got to make those, those challenging decisions. I don't believe that there are going to be widespread layoffs across the state. I do think there will be districts that are particularly challenged. But I do not believe that this is going to be the second coming of 2011 when the state cut $470 per kid in per pupil foundation allowance and there was more than a billion dollars worth of cuts across the state of Michigan. I don't believe that that's going to happen this go-round. I do think that there are some districts that have been in the media that have been challenged, and I think that there will be others that demonstrate or experience some, some challenges. But I don't think you're going to see it in 800 districts across the state. We won't know firmly, though, the, the impact of the mix of factors to which I refer until the fiscal year '25 budget is finalized by the state, until local school districts finalize their budgets, until local school districts finalize their staffing, and until we roll into the '24, '25 school year. So to, to compare rep reports, our registered education personnel reports from this year to next year will answer your, your question, but we're, we're months out from that. Yeah, please.
I have a lot of questions.
I know you do.
I got you in the hot seat. Because I'm always trying to understand as I get new to the board, but so as, as simple and it seems like common sense, is there a structure in place that the state board or are there workshops that the superintendents, the CFOs, the school boards that are elected attend about simple and structural budgeting?
No. But there, but there is a Michigan School Business Officials Conference that takes place every year. It took place a few weeks ago. You had, I believe, 1,800 people in Grand Rapids, along with a number of our people who were talking about coming off of what sometimes is called the financial cliff. I, I, I don't like the term because I don't perceive it to be as cliff-like as, bless you, as I thought it was coming off of ARA funds in 2009 and '10, as I thought it was with the $470 per kid cut in 2011. So I don't view it as, I view it as a significant challenge for certain districts. In some cases, because of actions that they've taken, in other cases, in spite of actions, in spite of whatever their actions were. So there is work on this. There's been enduring work on this between MDE and the School Business Officials, MDE and, and school superintendent. But there is no structural balance workshop, per se. It's, it's of a piece with three years of thinking about this moment.
Well, yeah. I mean, so, you know, all kinds of thoughts, but then, so like even prior to serving in the legislature, but even in the legislature, a lot of times we were asked, and just recently, the, the state has forgiven some school debts, you know. And my, my conversation in those meetings were always, "Okay, that's fine and I believe we need it, but what's your plan moving forward to not be in this scenario three, five, seven, 10 years from now?" And a lot of times, no one had answers. Unlike, like Super who just left talked about the bump money, the, you know, the ESER money, the art money. They, they looked at getting that bump, that one-time funding and stretched it out. Like, you know, we just, it's, it's, it becomes cyclical, you know, like this, this cycle of just never-ending debt if you don't have people thinking thoughtfully through their hard decisions.
So districts are in very, very different circumstances. If you didn't get much pandemic relief money, you don't have to come off of much pandemic relief money. If you didn't use pandemic relief money for recurring expenditures, you don't have to address the adverse impact to your structural budget balance of those decisions. If you didn't enter into long-term labor obligations, that, that issue is moot. If you did enter into long-term labor obligations, but you were able to be relatively conservative about what you were doing in the out-years, again, you're not going to be as adversely affected as, as some. So there's no single position.
I get it.
I know you do.
And to quote you, "And, and, and."
Yes, sir. That's a good quote. I acknowledge that quote.
So I grew up, but there's, you know, sometimes I give you these sayings that I got growing up in my household. So there's the one about, you know, it might be a hard decision if you gotta rob from Peter to pay Paul, but if you rob him from Peter and Paul, you got a problem. So.
And particularly if there's no Mary.
Right.
So, so, so let me just say that I, I think the districts that are going to be challenged the most are districts that struggled with enrollment pre-pandemic, struggled with enrollment post-pandemic. So they, they went into the pandemic with structural challenges in their budget. The pandemic relief funding for this small group of districts papered over their structural imbalance. But tic-tac goes the clock and the pandemic relief funding is ending. State revenue growth is not going to be as healthy. Will be healthy, but will not be as substantial as in '23 and '24. And we are in the ears of a number of the leaders of those districts.
And that focuses a glimpse into me and Super Rice, superintendent Rice's conversations.
There you go. Okay. A lot said and a lot unsaid. Who is, who is next? Ms. Lipton?
Get them, Ellen. So I just, I just want to refer to the slides from the, from the earlier presentation because I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding the implications correctly. I think now I have a better understanding. I think sometimes reports oftentimes will focus on the, the negative, which we oftentimes see, you know, whether it's on social media or what, or what have you, because, you know, that's sort of part of the, you know, the culture of, of, you know, where we're at. But just on... But just on page, or slide 11 and 12 of page six of the presentation of elementary and secondary school emergency relief ESER funding. I think we probably, we probably have a pretty good idea of, right now, the districts that are going to have challenges because what I'm reading is that of the first tranche, there's 1.51 million remaining, which is, you know, in the grand scheme of the, grand scheme of things, quite small. So most of that money has been, has been out there purchased. Second tranche, again, only remaining under 7 million. Again, a small amount. So the, the districts have received the money and, and spent it the way that, that we wanted them to. And.
Or the way that they wanted them to, to be clear, because there are the dozen purposes. So they choose.
That's right. They choose, and, and they, and it sounds, based on the presentation, that there was a lot of support from the department, which is, which is what, that's a good thing, because the, the applications were reviewed, and it sounds like there was a lot of contacts, a lot of people doing presentations, what have you. So there's a lot of support from the department. And 789.3 million remaining, and still months to actually. So the reality is, is that, yes, I, I hear what you're saying, that there, that, that there is this possibility of high probability of some districts facing a structural imbalance. But it sounds to me like the department has a pretty good handle on the districts. And I guess my, my, my question is, does the department feel that, that the department has enough capacity to assist the districts in helping them through a difficult spot if they should find a difficult spot? I'm always worried about the carving out of the department.
So, so, so to the, to the question, let me, let me say this, that we have, we have gotten very specific with our guidance and advice to particular local school districts around structural budget balance in, in a number of cases that I can think of. At the end of the day, though, we cannot pull the trigger on the sorts of actions that those local school districts need to take. We can suggest, we can provide a menu of possibilities, but at the end of the day, they have to figure it out. Superintendents, boards, community members, labor unions, and, and, and. They have to figure out what the best mix of staff compensation, material supplies, and equipment are to serve a given community. So one community may prefer to have a little bit higher salaries and a little bit less generous benefits. Another district may feel just the, the opposite. And a third district may want to pour more into a larger number of staff members, perhaps to reduce class size, perhaps to address helping professionals that can support students and staff outside of and inside of classrooms, guidance counselors, nurses, school social workers, school psychs, and might favor more staff and a little bit less generous compensation. But at the end of the day, you only have so much recurring revenue. At the end of the day, those decisions are made at a local school district level. And we've, you know, we've been pretty bold about saying to, to people, look, you have a, for example, a physical plant that is really consistent with a district, perhaps twice your size or three times your size. It's not sustainable to operate a physical plant like this. I can remember a conversation that I had with a superintendent for whom I worked years ago. And I said, you know, you've got 34 elementary schools. You've got 8,500 elementary school children. It's not vaguely possible that you can operate 34 elementaries with 8,500 kids indefinitely. You've got seven under 200 kids. You'll have nine under 200 kids next year. That's not vaguely sustainable. You've got to address that. Now, that's a, a manner of talking about structural balance with a, with a, with a superintendent in this particular case. So those conversations are different in different spaces. You know, all districts don't have the same needs. You go into some districts, and they have security in the hallways. Other districts don't. You go into some districts, they have social workers. Other districts don't. You heard Superintendent Long talk about what she had pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic. The behaviors that we saw manifest coming out of the pandemic were extraordinary behaviors. And they were a function of kids not having had the practice or never having been in school at all. And, you know, the idea somehow that it's just magical, kids come into school, and they have in-space with one another behaviors. Not the case at all. And I think this is what Ms. Tilly was pulsing with Ms. Jackson about. You know, where Superintendent Long said, this is a new world. She's in Leland. I mean, you know, just, you know, wrap your head around it. It's not the largest district in the, in the state. And what she's saying, because she's sharp, she's saying, hey, this is, this is rural Michigan. And I can testify that among my rural colleagues, my experience is not unique. So don't talk to me about how this is only an urban thing or, or a, an urban ring thing. It's an urban suburban and rural thing. And we were noticing it pre-pandemic, but it really jumped post-pandemic. The good news is we've got substantial resources now to address it. 31N funding is up over $100 million. 31AA funding is up over $300 million, $328 million for 31AA. And section 31N funding is about $113 million. So that's the good news. The, the challenge, though, is that we've got to, we've got to raise up and continue to employ this group of helping professionals. We added 1,000 helping professionals during the pandemic, principally with, with 31O funding, but also with, with, you know, 31AA funding as, as well as 31O funding dissipated. But the, the reality is, is that if local school districts could have added 500, 600, 800 more, they would have. The paradox is, for some of us in our careers, we've been able to hire people if we'd had the money. There were people to hire but for money that was nonexistent at a given moment. That's flipped now. We have more dollars, fewer staff, that were addressing the, the teacher shortage and helping professional shortage, the support staff shortage over a period of time. But it takes time to, to, to get there. So I think what, what I would say is, I think this is going to be a challenging moment for some. For others, you won't be able to discern the challenge outside looking, looking in, given their mix of factors. Yeah. Any other questions? Once, twice, thrice?
I will follow up on what you just said about the dollars being there now and maybe not the staff to hire. And that was the question that I was asking Superintendent Long. Are there now the resources, but the constraint might be that you don't have enough time to spend those resources? I mean, there might have been districts that wanted to do more with HVACs and, and building and infrastructure, but just ran out of time, so had to shift the dollars somewhere else. Or they would have been able to better plan out how the dollars could be spent, or if we could produce more graduates to go into the classroom, there may be better opportunity to spend the dollars. Are we hearing that still?
So, one question that I got at Education Alliance yesterday with the ed org executive directors is, has there been any extension of the, the deadline for which you have to liquidate the dollars? So the deadline, deadline for obligation is coming up September 30th, 2024. For liquidation, it's a couple of years out. And there's a, there's a conversation.
Couple of months, months, December.
There's a, there's, there is a, there's a conversation, an enduring conversation about that liquidation period being able to be extended, because you can obligate. In other words, you can, you can begin a project. Let's say you can ink a contract September 29th for, for a project. That project could take 12 months to complete. And you're not going to, you, you, you know, it would, it's a, it's an odd place to be for a local school district to have to choose between giving a company dollars before they fully complete the work. No business would, would do that. No school district should do that. Or waiting until the project is over and conceivably going beyond the liquidation period of time. So there are active conversations at the federal level about possibly extending this liquidation period, and we would be supportive of that. The question that was asked of me was if this were, if this were, if the feds were to say that this was going to be done on a state-by-state basis, and if the SEA applied, the feds would summarily approve an extension of the liquidation period, would we, would we apply for? And I said, of course. I mean, what, what, what's the downside to applying for, for a more elongated liquidation period? But remember, it doesn't affect anything related to staffing, because that obligation is going to be liquidated very, very soon thereafter, September 30th. It would really be for a major capital project, an HVAC system, for example.
I mean, and that's, that, that would be good for that reason, for like the back office services and making sure the contract agreements are met. There's also just the thought, I mean, and just hearing Superintendent Long and hearing about some of the things that they were thinking about pre-COVID, and they were able to better, you know, get a start on planning. There are just our districts that just, like, like we said, I mean, they were, they're lopsided now, so that they didn't get a chance to plan. Then they did the plan, and there may be just items that they could have, or things that they could have done better if they had more time to plan out the work, spend the dollars, have the right people or, that were there to, to do the work and carry out the work. And I, I guess my thought is, if they have those resources, that they're not just throwing them at things now. I mean, that would be the extreme, but just making sure that they're just not trying to unload the dollars. Are we, are we hearing that?
No. The, the concern for some is that the dollars were so large
Right.
that, that they had to go into spending non-recurring funding on recurring expenditures. But we don't hear a lot about poor spending, in part because we took a pretty tough line on this early on in '21, and, you know, actually in '20 with CARES Act and CRESSA. And then in, in '21, '23, and into 2024 with the conclusion of CARES and CRESSA and, and the, the advent and the spending of, of ARP dollars. We, we were real clear, if it's not within the four corners of those 12 broad areas, we're not approving it. And if you, if you want us to seek a different, if you want us to ask US Ed specifically, be back up. If, if it's clear that something is a non-allowable expenditure, that's the answer. It's done. But there are, there are certain expenditures that we argued were kind of in a gray area. We didn't think that they necessarily were allowable. But we were prepared to go to US Ed and say, US Department of Education, you know, we've got this school district that's making this case. Is this a permissible expenditure or not? If US Ed said yes, then, then we documented that. We moved forward. If US Ed said no, there was the answer. Yeah. I think, I do not hear of rushed spending now. What I heard was early, oh my goodness, in some districts. In some districts, this is a lot of money to spend very quickly. And in some other districts, we're not getting our fair share. Because the district, remember, the distribution formula for these pandemic relief funds is the Title I Part A formula, which is, you know, notoriously jagged. It is, it is focused on addressing the compensatory education needs of children across the state, which are related to, very substantially related to poverty. And so when you, when you distribute pandemic relief based on a formula that is driven largely by poverty numbers, there are going to be challenges. So there was an effort to, to balance in some fashion some of the, the funding. That's a whole additional conversation. But there were some districts that initially didn't feel as if they were getting a fair share in the pandemic. Yeah. Other questions? Once, twice, thrice? Boarded is 12:12. And we are going to adjourn for lunch, and we are going to come back at 1:15. Thank you very much.